I believe there's more here tonight than had been.
Yeah?
That ain't saying nothing.
No.
I'll just follow Academy.
Good evening, and I'd like to welcome you to this Paulding County Board of Commissioners Public Hearing for Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2013 at 6:00 p.m. At this time, I will recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board. Once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allotted three minutes to speak. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend the rule. At this time, we have several individuals who have signed up to speak. If there is anyone who did not get on the list, I'll ask first for Mr. John Reichsneider.
Reichsneider. He got pretty close, actually. I had more, can you answer questions for me in this situation? Or comments? My comments deal with, I looked at the budgets from 2009 compared to 2013.
We need you to state your name and address.
John Reichsneider, Heron Bay, 372 South A-Drive, Lucas Grove, address. Anyway, I compared 2009 to 2013. I find that you had, you know, a budget of around $41 million back then, now you've got $39. I'm helping your cause here in a way. Because you had to really control your money well in order to keep, as your income came went down, you had to reduce things at each, and you also had to take care of inflation in that period. So that's been a difficult situation, I'd assume, for you. So you're about 95% of what you were in 2009. Dealing with that, we have a particular problem for appraised values, especially in our particular area of Heron Bay and the Gables. We have 46 homes in our area. And I'll probably have to turn this over to the tax assessor so they can work on it. But here's the situation. We have 12 homes that are the exact same size, the same model, yet their square footages run from 2,300 square feet to 3,100 square feet with the same house. So we got four that are not in the right way. We also have eight or nine homes that say they have a bonus room, but they don't. So I don't know what the tax assessors have done to get where they got their information, but they need to find a better way because what they're getting is misinformation. And therefore, when you put those together, that can affect what you will be able to receive for income. Because of those three, those four houses that are undervalued by, that say was about 600 square feet, that can add up. Plus, the valuation per square foot also runs from like $37 up to $94. That's a wide range for some of the same houses in the same area. They all should be fairly close together. Part of that is because a couple of them sold foreclosures, they've got an appraised value for what they sold for, which is like $115,000 when they're more like $200,000. And they remodeled them and updated them, but it's not been changed. That's my comments.
Yes, Mr. Reichsneider, Schneider, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Many of the comments that you made were concerns that were expressed at the last meeting. If you would please make sure that our county manager, this is Mr. Wilson, has a contact phone number for you. We have had some questions answered, but I think that at the last meeting, there were several people from Heron Bay that had some of the similar questions. And I think we need to have a group meeting so that we all can understand how this process works. In terms of if it's a square footage, if you can't get in the house and look at the square footage, does it count if you have a fireplace? Does it count if you've got more than three or four bathroom fixtures?
Whether you have grandmas, or whether you have file floors, or whether you...
So if you could give him that information, Mr. Wilson here, as soon as we can make an arrangement for us to all meet together, then we'll do that. And we'll make it pretty quick, okay? Thank you so much, sir, for sharing. Next resident to sign up is Mr. Dan Klein.
My name is Dana Klein, I live on Muckler Burnley in Brooks, Georgia. Brooks is, the area we live is in Spalding County. We have a, it's an OIA phone number, we have a Fayette County, Brooks mailing address, receive our U2Bs from Buds County, we need the taxes from Spalding County. Our road is a dirt road, very poorly maintained, it hasn't been cut, probably a couple of years, the sides, we have trees growing up on the sides of the road, some of them are getting very big, and we have no fire hydrants access, so we pay higher premiums for our fire insurance. So my big complaint is a lack of service, or poor service. The other comment I have is that the assessment, or the fair market value on our property in 2006 increased by 72% to 2013. I do believe that's excessive, and if that is not excessive, I would like to make an investment that pays that well. That's my big complaint, and our taxes are too high for what we have, for the services we get. There is a house, three houses up that was sold, or was up for auction on the courthouse deck, nobody made an offer for it. I understand that it has, they've just had a reasonable contract offer for half of what it was proposed to sell on the courthouse steps, and it divided the property in half, actually, it was 35 acres, it divided to 20 acres and 15 acres through the middle of the lake. The reason for the division was requested by the bank, they said they would not give a mortgage of anything over 20 acres in a house. And so we were affected by that also. There was also property sold up on Lime Creek and Harmon Road at a much lower value per acre than what we were assessed for. I have put in for an appeal with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. William, could you answer this for me as well as for Mr. Klein? Is it so that when a property is a bank property, that that value, or if it's just in the hand of the bank, that value is not supposed to be processed with the other property values when they do the assessment, because it's kind of outside of the range?
I've had that for sure, but I think the law changed so that bank sales are part of the appraisal method now than were not before, but I'll find out from the tax assessor.
I also have an appraisal dated in April this year for our property, which is a lot lower than what the assessment came through from the county.
Okay. If you could, it's not difficult, if you give William your contact information, he'll get that initial information back to you. Something that we can look at right away is probably taking care of the dirt road situation and the tree cutting. And we'll have William to look at, to talk with the water and sewer authority about those fire hydrants. I didn't know that. Mr. Klein, while you were talking, I asked William to make sure that he gets on to look at the road situation as far as getting the roads put in better shape, and also the tree cutting on the side. We will also ask him to get with the water and sewer authority and find out what the status is of you getting.
There is a fire hydrant on Ivy 16, and a fire hydrant on Sandy Lake, but none of them are, you know, it's not a model.
Okay, and he will get back to you later. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Reg Hill.
Good afternoon. My name is Reg Hill, and I live at 226 Begonia Court, address is Griffin, Georgia. I've been to a couple of these while I was here Monday, to the September 23rd meeting. There are a couple of folks here, I don't think their questions were rhetorical, but maybe they were. They asked, I think most folks realize this is an exercise in futility. In other words, what they were saying was that you guys have already made up your mind to raise the tax, so why are we here, I guess? Hopefully you haven't, and hopefully you'll listen to these folks and the ones that have been here before me. We know that the three meetings are required by the state, so number one, that makes you a little bit suspicious. Would you guys be having this meeting if it wasn't required by the state? So we could come in and give you our opinions or express our concerns. There's a number of issues that, with the tax increases, that have come to light. One of the gentlemen that was here before brought up the fact of unpaid taxes. Like anything else, if you've got people that aren't paying their fair share and other people are paying theirs, or you haven't increased my taxes because you're not collecting, there was no answer to that. The tax commissioner's not here again this evening. I noticed the school board folks are not in representation, so really, they get a piece of the property tax as well. Why aren't they here? Isn't that not mandated by the state as well? Did they not have to show up at these meetings to listen to us complain? That's not rhetorical, maybe you can answer that after I finish. But then there's the subject of the tax appeals that go back to 2009. Who's not doing their job? That's a dereliction of duty. I mean, you know, I've been living here since 2008 and pretty much paying my taxes right along. With the assessments that I got, and your one mill increase, I'm getting a double whammy. You know, I mean, why are you giving me a higher assessment and then charging me another mill to recover money for wherever it's being spent? I don't have a clue what's going on there. I live in Sun City. It appears as though we're paying a lot of taxes out there, and we're not going to need your services, or, I mean, we do get some services, but you're not going to have to do anything to the streets, sidewalks, and those types of things for years yet. So you're really, you're really collecting a lot of money there, and what are you going to do with that money? That's, that's my concern. And I'll just leave you with this, the judicious stewardship of taxpayer revenue should always be a top priority by the county commissioners, the tax commissioners, and other people that are elected to take care of our funds in these budget decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Just FYI, the school board is meeting tonight, and they're required to have the same types of public hearings that we're having. Our budgeting process has actually, where we've actually had meetings where the public was eager to come, started in April this year, and generally, most of those are advertising the newspaper, locally on the radio, and on our website. So there, you know, maybe we didn't use a venue that got that information to you, but there have been opportunities, and some people from the county have come during the process to share their concerns or to ask questions. So I apologize that you, we didn't get the message to you to let you, you know, and others where you live to know that, and we will try to do a better job of that.
Well, there's significantly, a portion of the taxes that are being paid, and, you know, I just, I just felt it would be nice if you guys could all huddle together so that we don't have, as citizens, it's, you know, we need it made a little more, or a little easier on us. A lot of folks are still working, and time constraints are such, and it just seems like to me that why would it not be easy for everybody to get in the room at the same time, so you don't have, so I don't have to go tell them the same thing I'm telling you? It just seems like you're duplicating your efforts, and the tax commissioner ought to be here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Delane Biddy.
Delane Biddy, 232 Begonia Court, Griffin, Georgia. And I was also here Monday, a week ago, for the hearing, and heard a lot of the same topics that were talked about over again. I know you're getting tired of hearing the same thing, but if, I personally think if we collect the back taxes, we'd handle our appeals properly, we'd probably have the money, we wouldn't have to give foreign money like we're doing just to get by, and we also wouldn't be raising taxes. It's just unheard of, that we don't even realize what we've got, or what we will have, yet we want to increase. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'll ask Mr. Jason Lovett to come to the podium, please, and give us your name and address, sir.
Thank you. My name's Jason Lovett, I live at 102 Fox Road in Griffin, Georgia. I've been there about a decade and a half. I make my living repairing trash cans. I literally stand in a dumpster. It takes 57 hours to pay the taxes that I currently pay in property tax. What we're doing here is asking me to stand in that dumpster for 58. Now, everybody in this room, including the people on that board, all stand in their own dumpster, whether it's at a cubicle, or in field, or on a factory floor. It's not the extra hour that bothers me so much. The greatest wrong what we're doing by increasing property taxes is the inflation that these property taxes cause. Now, if you listen to nothing else that I'm going to say here, I want you to hear one simple statement. In the history of the world, no business, no corporation, no company has ever paid a single penny in tax. A business treats a tax exactly the way they treat the pens, the pencils, the buildings, the machinery, or the labor that goes into the cost of goods and services that we all buy. If you increase their tax, they will increase the products that you, the cost of the products that you buy. Now, most of you think that it's very simple, we're going to increase the millage rate, ah, we get a little bit from the residents, but we're going to get this huge amount from a company like Caterpillar. And we think, well, we're okay, we're okay, because nobody here is going to buy a tractor-trailer sized generator, but your hospital is. And Caterpillar is going to pass this property tax right on to the hospital that buys the generator. The hospital's going to pass it to the patient, and it's going to end up coming out of your pocket. Nobody escapes this economic fact. What we have is a failure to understand basic economic principles in this country. You know, I was 38 when I first read a children's economics book called Whatever Happened to Penny Can? We assume that we can help the poor by raising taxes, and we'll put this money in a fund, and they'll get it. We'll tax their landlords to increase the, we'll increase the property tax on their landlords. Well, as soon as they open the bill, they're going to pass that on in the form of rent to the people that rent from them. The very people you're wanting to help the most will be affected the most. Every tax ends up in the cost of goods and services we buy. Companies will seek the cheapest place to produce their goods. We've all heard of Detroit. Two years ago, I'd heard, I thought, there's no way this can be this way. So my wife and I took our vacation to Detroit. It is worse than you can ever imagine, but you don't have to go to vacation in Detroit to find this out. You can go to High Falls and Church Road, see a dilapidated factory, and the houses around it that once were supported by that factory. That factory left because they could no longer afford to operate here, and they went elsewhere. If you don't think that's true, go buy something at Hill Street Market. I'll save you the walk, it's closed. They couldn't make it to this town because the cost of doing business here is too high. We lost three jobs. Those go on the role of the people that you're trying to help now. Every county manager, every city manager's job, their dream is to make bigger and bigger government, because the bigger it is, the more powerful they are. We elect you to hold them in check, to limit the amount that they spend. The less that we spend in this community, the more inviting it is for companies to come here. The more inviting it is, the more jobs we will create. The more jobs we create, the less people you're going to have to try to help. This is economic reality. Now, I'm not here simply to complain. I don't want to stand in the dumpster any longer than I have to, to pay my property taxes. But I'm here to tell you that raising, and raising, and raising, larger and larger governments increases the number of people that you're going to have to help. The more people you try to help, the larger the tax has to be. And eventually, these companies that are producing the jobs will simply leave. And when they do, the people left behind will need more and more services. In conclusion, I am here to help you. If you want my help, Raymond Narate knows how to find me. I will tell you how to find all of these economic books that will tell you exactly what I laid out here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing, Mr. Lovett. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Mike Benedict to come up to the podium, please.
My name is Mike Benedict, I live at 55 Muskriv Road in Griffin, Georgia. I too am here to voice my opinion about my property taxes, the millage rate going up. Some of this is not necessarily the people I'm living in, y'all's fault. We don't have industry here, we don't have a tax base, and I realize that the tax burden is on us, I don't like it. Now, I've lived in Griffin, long I've carried it, over 50 years. I know, talking to people, that when we had the textile industries here, some of the people that ran the textile mills, they did not want any industry in this community for fear of losing their faithful employees to higher paying jobs. So by doing that, we kind of locked these people from coming in here. And I'm not sure that some problems with us getting industry here is a factor. We don't have a good, I know we have a high teen pregnancy rate, we have a high poverty rate, and we have a high high school dropout rate. I know a neighbor of mine's wife is a doctor, she moved to this area for one reason, to work in this hospital for two years to wipe her debt free, because, I don't know if that's a reason we don't have industry, but that's a problem, guys, we don't have industry here, and all the burden is on us as taxpayers. And it goes back more than five or 10 years, it may go back 40 years. I know that you can't lock industry out. And by, Mr. Lovett?
Lovett?
Lovett? His statement is true, if you got the millage rate so high, and taxes so high, then these industries don't sell. Ah, we don't want to go in that. I'm asking you guys, I don't, I feel like you're double dealing, you're raising the value of my home, now the millage rate's going to go up. I'm asking you guys, don't, don't increase our property taxes at all. Let's figure out ways to save money. I worked in big corporations where when it got tight, you don't want to hear this, but you had to cut, they had to draw that string up a little tighter. I've got laid off from companies that never, ever had a layoff, but when it got tight, they realized, we got to do something to try to sustain. I'm asking you guys, let's weigh this thing out and not just keep beating these, beating us to death with these property taxes. Our property taxes went up more than, you know, I carry it even at mid, and I wonder, when a bag of property was so low, I didn't see my property taxes going down then. So, you know, where is the, where are we going to recover that? I got one more little statement. This goes to our industrial park, and our lead, our new airport looks like it's going to get shut down, our throat. This is not the field of dreams where if you build, people will come. I don't believe it'll happen. It hasn't happened before. I just wish that y'all would consider not raising our property taxes. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Benedict, can I just ask you a question? Did you appeal your, your property tax assessment?
I did last year, and they lowered it. I went to do it this time, and the gentleman was there, said, well, you'll have to present your case before the board, they'll call you. I never got a call. They lowered my property tax values where I felt like it should have been, and they turned right around. Last year, they had my property valued at $130,000. I couldn't get that for my home. You can't, and so they dropped it down to 118, 120, and I was comfortable with that. There's three houses where I live, and they're all built by the same builder, they're kind of the same floor pan, just different exteriors. I was the only one to appeal mine, mine came down. This year, I got my notice, I come over here, do my appeal, and the guy said, well, you'll have to present your case before the board. He never, ever let me sit down and do anything. Last year, I was able to do that. I don't know the gentleman's name, I'm terrible at names, unless you tell me five, six times, and I talk to you in a regular way, so I couldn't remember his name.
Could you please give William your information, because that's really not how that process is supposed to work?
Yeah, I was here early one morning, as soon as they opened, I was here to do it. He said, well, you got to fill out this, and this is what you're going to do. Last year, he didn't go that way. I went back, talked to the gentleman, he looked at my neighbor's property, and he said, well, what if we do in between here? I said, that'd be fine, I don't need to be the highest one on the block.
So if you just would, give William our county manager information, and hopefully we can get some answers about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. I'll ask Ms. Joanna Johnson to please come to the podium.
My name's Joanna Johnson, I live at 131 Kelly Road in Griffin.
Okay, do I hit man?
Okay. I said it, Joanna Johnson, I live at 131 Kelly Road in Griffin. Bear with me, because I get a little nervous in front of people. However, I would just like to say that I've lived in the same house for the past 17 years. Nothing spectacular has changed about the house, no gold layers or anything like that, but the taxes have gone from being $1,400 a year to over $2,300. I don't understand, it's such a big hike in what I have been paying, and what I have to pay now, it just doesn't seem like it's quite a fair jump for it to go that far. I mean, we haven't added any type of buildings on the property, we haven't done any type of modifications, it's a dirt road that does not get maintained at all, however, it is supposed to be a county maintained road. But it might get scraped maybe once a year if someone complains because we have such large potholes in the road, that it will literally knock the alignment out of your car. There's five houses on the road, the other five are trailers. It's not like in a neighborhood, it's very raw, so it's surrounded by woods. So it's surrounded by woods. There's the property across from me is like, I don't know, a hundred acres. And the property in back of me is like fifty or sixty acres. To the other side of me is twenty-five acres. So I'm surrounded by woods. We're all on five acres apiece out there, except for the property that is used for hunting land. I just don't understand what it is about my property where it would go from fourteen hundred to twenty-three hundred. That just seems like a very large jump. And I can understand that, because I'm an educator, I know where you're coming from about saying that, you know, the school board needs some money and all this. Because lord knows, I don't want my ten furlough days for real. I'm glad to have them back. But I also don't want to be on the other end going like I'm being punished, you know, for that by having my property tax jump so high. So I'm just wanting to know if somebody can come out, maybe take a look at where I live and see if that's a fair hike. That's all.
I think that's fair.
Or give me gravel, you know?
That, that we can do. We actually have recently just asked for a list of all the roads in the county that are still dirt. And many of them, we have asked the residents if they, or we're in the process of asking the residents if they want the road paid. Part of what happens is that at least ninety percent or eighty percent of the residents on that road have to give us permission to get easement for the right of way because the road has to be a certain width. So if you will give William your information, we'll see about getting the road scraped and the other information and he will try to help make arrangements for me to get the information you need about the history of your tax increases and we'll give it another second.
Yeah, this sixteen-hundred square foot home is small. It's not, I want more luxury if I'm gonna pay that much.
I'll ask Ms. Debbie Frost to show come to the podium.
My name is Debbie Frost and I live at seven-two-four Deanan Road in Griffin. It's over in Sunnyside. The recession and loss of jobs caused by the high taxes created a drop in the government revenue. It created an economic production that dropped. If the government then raised tax rates to recoup the lost revenue, production drops again and the revenue drops even more. Now Spalding County residents are struggling to make ends meet as we try and get through this recession. We quite simply cannot afford to pay higher taxes. In the last two years, my property taxes have gone up a hundred and eighty percent. Your property taxes dropped. Mine went, phew, out through the roof. Now, we have an appraisal done on our house and we were told that our house, we couldn't even refinance because the value of our property had dropped so much. And the tax officials, they said, well, gee, don't you just wish your house could be that much? Well, if I can't get a refinance to lower my payment on my house, why would I volunteer to pay more in taxes on a house that's not worth it? But this has just kind of been overlooked. The U.S. government was created to maximize liberty. The United States was not organized around institutionalized programs or religion or ethnicity. Americans are a people of the book, the Constitution. According to our founders, the government should play a limited role in the lives of the Americans by providing for a common defense, the rule of law, property rights, and a justice system that protects them. At this moment, property taxes are unreasonable. Up to sixty percent of the county's real estate is assessed way too high and with no reason given as to how the value was ascertained. Take, for example, two homes in Sunnyside, same size, same yard. One is taxed way higher than the other. No extra amenities in either one. Their taxes should be even, but they're not. My father has five acres. It's bare land. There's four acres across the road from him. It has a home on it. Yet my father is paying as much in taxes as that property was a house. That's just plain wrong. Clearly, the raise in taxes has been a burden on the county as the tax office now must spend additional hours with appeals. This is not something that the county can be proud of. Tax employees are changing the tax rate of the homes to garnish more money for the county. The appeals board is a joke. Good, hard-working taxpayers appeal in hopes that someone will listen. But the appeals board is trained by the county, or the county tax office. And county employees are openly intimidating the three-panel board during the hearings. This is wrong. This needs to be investigated. It is just against the law and it's just wrong. So how is one supposed to receive a fair appeal? The Spalding County has responsibility to carefully account for public funds and to manage finances wisely. Sound financial policies are necessary to carry out these objectives responsibly and efficiently. That's written into your budget. And yet, in the last two years, the Spalding County commissioners have spent all of the people's money and your broke. Now you want us to cover up for your spending. Three million went to find or to fund the senior citizens center. And I understand, that's a pretty cool thing. That's, that's neat. But not when the majority of the senior citizens didn't want it. They don't wanna have to spend their final years having to decide between paying taxes, medical, and insurance. And now, the county is saddled with all that extra expense and upkeep. Six million dollars was approved by SLOS for the ADMHZ, the three-eight, thirty-eight-fifty system. Now, we needed that for our communications, our police and everything, and that was awesome. But you guys went and spent four million above the six million that was approved by SLOS by the county. You didn't even check into it to see if you could get something, a little better deal. You were told, hey, this guy, he's left his company, he's with another company, but he's got a better deal. You didn't look into it. You didn't check into it. That's not spending county money wisely. That's just, hey, you gave that guy a great commission. Three police cars have been given away so far, to my knowledge, and the county had fifteen. Now, if these cars are in such bad shape and have a hundred, two-hundred thousand miles on them, why are we giving them away? I would think if they're that bad, the other county sheriffs wouldn't want these cars. So something's kinda hinky going on there. The cars that you had in the county, there were fifteen police cars. You could've sold them. You could've made money with it. You could've used that money instead of having to borrow another seven thousand dollars from the bank. And then you had to add and pay a percentage price on top of that. You're not budgeting very clearly.
Mr. Frost, can I ask you to wrap it up, please?
Sure, no problem. We went through your budget. We found two million that you could cut without having to cut into the police and the school system. There is mega-waste in there. There's another two million that could be collected. The government causes its own revenue shortages by wanting more money than it should have. And you're a victim of your own greed. The governments must not put themselves ahead of the people they serve. We're asking you, please don't raise these taxes. We can't afford it. Those that can, they're all gonna leave and then you're gonna be left with what? Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, ma'am. I will ask Ms. Norma Giles, Elizabeth Lane, please come forward.
I'm Norma Giles, three-oh-two Elizabeth Lane, Griffin, Georgia, in Ms. Taylor's district. A lot of us out there in our area are retired. We can't afford the tax rates. Something you people probably never even thought about when you were so gung-ho on the airport, how much property is gonna be affected by that. I'm not gonna be able to sell my property. Nobody's even gonna buy it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't pay you five dollars for my property when I got an airplane fixed to take off right over my roof. And there's a bunch of people out there in this neighborhood, in your district, who are gonna lose their homes. We can't sell them and you're making it impossible for us to keep them. That's all I've got to say. I don't have any other residents that are signed up.
Steve?
Excuse me, Ms. Taylor. I was not able to write by six because I got fined at my office and I was told whether they were gonna sign up or not. And I respectfully request that our community and sheriff be authorized.
Yes, ma'am, come forward. Give us your name and your address, okay?
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. My name is Debbie Dutton and I live at one-sixty-one West Ellis Road in Griffin. My husband and I purchased our home in nineteen eighty. And I understand that many factors affect the value of property in any county, such as the economy, the list price for homes in the real estate market, rental property as opposed to owned property, foreclosures, vacant homes, crime rates, school performance, graduation rate, so on and so forth. For our county, the median list price in Griffin currently is sixty-one thousand nine hundred. That's a thirteen-point-one percent decline for the quarter and a thirteen-point-six decline for the prior year. While Zebulon, their median list price is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Fifty-seven percent of all homes in Griffin are renters. And the national average is less than thirty-four percent. The crime rate is above national average with property crime at six percent of the population being affected, while the national average is only three-point-eight-nine percent. And violent crime is point-seven-eight percent with a national average of only point-four-seven percent. In two thousand and eleven, there were five rapes, forty-seven robberies, a hundred and two assaults, three hundred and four burglaries, one thousand one hundred and eighty-three thefts, forty-four auto thefts, and nine arson. There's only thirty-four percent of cities in the U.S. with higher crime rates. There are a hundred and ninety-six registered sex offenders living in Spalding County. And the chance of becoming a victim of a crime is one in one hundred and fifty-two versus the state of Georgia of one in two hundred and forty-eight. In two thousand and twelve, Georgia was among the top five foreclosure rates. We were actually ranked number four. Griffin High is among the worst-performing schools in the state of Georgia and it's listed as a priority school. Now, to be listed as a priority school, that means that less than sixty percent graduate and that they're consistently performing poorly on tests. Griffin High actually has a thirty-seven-point-eleven dropout rate, while the state number is only twenty-one-point-four. Now, let me relate this to me. As I said, my husband and I have been in the same home since nineteen eighty. And it was a wonderful place to raise our first two children. I'm gonna tell you, it was great. But since that time, our home has been robbed. My husband's car was vandalized and broken into with property taken. Our barn was damaged and broken into and property taken. All in broad daylight. Our insurance, our current homeowner's insurance, sent us a letter this year and said, because of where you live, we can't insure your house for this value anymore. We're gonna have to lower what we're insuring your house for. That's not, that's not a comfortable feeling. Now, all these problems were not created by us, the tax-paying property owners, yet you guys were seeming to be putting the burden back on our backs. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and share these thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dutton. At that time, with comments being settled, you know, if people listen on the list, are there any commissioners who would like to address any of the concerns that was ever presented in the comments made tonight?
I feel like most of y'all did. My property has been valued too high. I walked in the tax assessor's office and asked people what I set it for that, which I thought was really embarrassing to even make that. I didn't go in there to, I went in there to fill my taxes. I didn't go in there to ask you that I wanna sell my property. I don't know where they came up with these values on these houses. I've heard this from several folks. I mean, thirty, forty thousand dollars difference it was three years ago and the price of property in Spalding County went down continuously. I feel for all of them. I know the county was overspending past years. We're trying to cut the budget now every year. I don't know what the answer is. I wish I did have an answer for it. Only thing I know is we're gonna have to cut our pockets a little deeper. Go in there a little deeper and say, we've gotta quit cutting. Whether we have to end up laying off folks, I don't know what the answer is. That's not what I wanna do, is lay off folks. But we don't have any jobs in Spalding County, no one. We don't need to be, the county doesn't need to be keeping up a value of two. But I do feel for it.
I can, you know, I second what Commissioner Miller's saying. I mean, this is tough economic times, you know. Property tax, I mean, it has raised over the last couple of years. I've been here for twelve years now, like you. I'm gonna do the same thing, but also, I'm sitting on this side of it. You know, I've seen other things, you know, and have witnessed other things that we're working hard to cut some of these, our budget so that we don't have to keep doing this. And just know that, you know, we, I feel for you, like, just like I'm in the same boat. I'm a business owner as well, so I understand what this means. But this is Spalding County. We've gotta do something to stop it, to stop the deficit. And it's tough decisions that have to be made and you let us, we have to make them.
I was born and raised in Griffin. I went away in the military, retired and came back because I wanted to do something in my hometown that did for me. I deal in facts. I deal in numbers. I don't deal in emotion. I don't deal in window, and I don't deal in lack of information. And most of what we've had tonight, we've had very good, some very good facts presented, and I appreciate that. But we've had a lot of emotion and that's generated because of, it affects me. Tax increases affect each one of us up here behind these chairs. It affects our families. I have an eighty-two-year-old mother living in Griffin. And if I vote to increase taxes, I'm increasing her taxes. The board is addressing issues that have been going on for years so far this year. And we are currently working on new fiscal policies and procedures manual for the county in order to limit spending, in order to put more protocols in place to protect against needless spending. But yet, many people out here are not aware of that. The reduction in costs throughout the government, through the county, through our budget review committee and the things that they have done. And the other actions that the Spalding County government as a whole has tried to complete in order to reduce taxes. I trust our government. I trust the people within Spalding County government to do the best they can. I trust the people within Spalding County government to do the best they can. Our employees have worked hard to save money, but ladies and gentlemen, over the last few years, we've cut into the muscle. When you sit down and look at facts of the reserve that was available in two thousand and seven versus what was available in two thousand and eleven, that shocked it. When you look at other numbers that are, have affected the county, you, myself, property owners, lack of businesses, yes, they're all factors and they affect the assessment. And I could go on, but I'm not going to. Tonight, we're here to talk about whether we're going to raise property, the military on properties. It is nothing personal against anyone in this room or anyone in this county, but we have been told, I have been told, do not, do not decrease my services. I am paying the taxes I pay in order to maintain those services. If we cut people, we cut services. If we cut services, we cut people. At the same time, we make our taxpayers very unhappy because the services that one lady's getting over here, another block may be using it four times as much, because this is not how it affects me, it's how it affects Spalding County as a whole. And we have to look at that total number and that's where sometimes it gets staggering. We don't seem to be perfect. We don't claim to be perfect. I don't, indeed, and I don't think any one of this board does, but we do strive to do a good job and we do strive to do it at a cost that's as affordable as possible. We don't-
First, I'd like to apologize to those that came to the meetings last week and those that aren't here that came because I was not able to be here. I do represent District Five and it bothered me tremendously that I was not able to be here, but I was at the hospital with my dad who had had open heart surgery. I want to say about this year's budget process and what we have been through, this is probably one of the most difficult processes that I have ever been through. You're looking at human lives, people's jobs, the cost it takes people to operate their homes.
I would like to call to order this special, extraordinary session meeting, special call meeting of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, October the first, two thousand and thirteen at six thirty P.M. The item on our agenda is the approval, thank you, first item on the agenda is the considered adoption of the two thousand and thirteen Spalding County tax levy. County manager, would you reverse that for us?
Yes, ma'am. Got word from the Board of Education, they did meet and recommend their millage rate that is incorporated into these figures that you have, so we recommend approval of the millage rate as stated.
Okay, so the millage rate, can you give us some specifics?
The cabin millage rate is sixteen point zero one, the school millage rate is nineteen point four seven, and the fire district is four point one seven.
Madam Chair, move to approve the millage rate as stated, sixteen point zero one for Spalding County. Coglin?
We, we need a motion to approve the levy-
Oh, the levy?
-which incorporates all of those.
I stand corrected and Madam Chair, I move to approve the two thousand and thirteen Spalding County tax levy as identified.
Madam Chair, I'll say-
I have a motion by Commissioner Wright and a second by Commissioner Gardner to adopt and approve the two thousand and thirteen Spalding County tax levy as identified by the county manager. Is there any discussion? There being none, Mr. Wright?
I'd like to make a comment. Ladies and gentlemen, this board has worked very hard on the budget. Many of you weren't here during the budget cycle and as Mr. Gardner, Commissioner Gardner said earlier, I've worked on eight governmental budgets, or excuse me, ten governmental budgets. This was the hardest I have ever worked to find possible reductions, enforce those reductions while at the same time trying to facilitate the best for our taxpayers and our employees. We have responsibilities to both. This was not an easy task and it is not an easy task now, but sometimes we have to step up and do the hard things in order to do the right thing. It affects myself, my family, as well as it affects everyone in this room. Things that have been stated that this board is responsible for, yeah, this board is responsible, but this board did not necessarily cause the injuries to Spalding County that has been caused. Legislation, previous decisions prior to this board taking seat, economics, financials, you name it, but ladies and gentlemen, they have impacted us at Spalding County here and now and we must address that as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to make one. I remember when I first ran for office, I was told, I didn't understand it then, but I definitely understand it now. Sometimes the right decision is not always the most popular and not saying that this is the right decision, but given the situation we're in right now, I do understand that and with everything that Raymond had said, putting everything into this and digging and cutting, you know, I don't know about you, but I want my nine women serviced there when I call them. We can't cut them. You know, there are certain services you just can't do, so just know that we did everything with our power to make this right and I stand behind that.
Now I'd like to follow up with that with just one little statement. When we were going through this budget process, it's not like we were trying to protect county employees. We did consider that if we had to lay off a county employee, particularly if they lived in Spalding County, that was one other person in Spalding County not working and not able to help support, you know, the operations of Spalding County. And our employees are sharing in this pain because we've taken two holidays away from our employee. Now you might think, oh, well, that just means that, you know, they have those two, they're without pay those days and it in effect is a, I forget-
Point seven nine two percent.
Impacted. And I mean, you know, we tried everywhere we could in looking at this budget with those items that we actually had as county commissioners fiscal control over to cut where we could and, you know, Ms. Frost and I talked and I've already talked with the county manager and some of our friends at Sun City that in this coming year's budget, I want to involve citizens in the budget process because I do feel that there may be citizens out there that may have ideas and suggestions on county services and how much those services cost. So, but anyway, we've been here a long time.
I just want to share with you guys one more thing. We are doing some things and if anybody wants to ask me after the meeting, I'll be glad to share with them, but we have worked in our workshops lately, recently, and we are trying to look at purchasing in bundles so that we make sure that we can get the best price for items that certain departments are getting. We are going to start a process where we're bidding all goods and services out so that we can get the best cost for that and we are looking at the economies of saving on gas purchases and uses of our vehicles and purchases of our vehicle. If anyone here has an email address, if you would leave it with our acting clerk, Mr. Clark, we will try to notify you of any meeting dates, any subjects that are coming up so that you can be better informed about where we are going and what we're doing and you can be available or set your schedule so you're available to come to those meetings or to share your concerns with your commissioner prior to them coming to the meeting. If there are no other comments, we'll call for a question. All those in favor, show of hands. Four, those opposed, one. Four, one, Commissioner Miller. Have a motion by Commissioner Gardner and a second by Commissioner Wright to adjourn this extraordinary session. All those in favor, show of hands. Five, zero. Any commissioners?